All right, guys, well, it is seven o'clock, so I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Councilmember McKenna will not be here this evening, he's out of town on business. And we will go ahead and get started. Next week, we have one proclamation, which is to recognize Veterans Day, and I think Sigourney is reading that one. So, all right, any discussion or comments on that? All right, we'll jump into our two public hearings. The first one is a resolution to consider the Herndon pedestrian plan. And Bryce Perry is here for the staff report.
He's been working a long day.
Oh, it's morning somewhere. Just long as we're not here till morning.
All right, so the town council saw the town's bicycle plan a few months ago. This is now its companion document, the town's pedestrian plan, which, like the bike plan, is really the first of its time for the town in that it's a standalone planning document dedicated solely, in this case, to enhancing pedestrian level of service in town. So, the effort started conceptually back in 2014, which doesn't sound like that long ago, but kinda was a while ago now. That's when P-VAC really began discussing the need. Though the draft plan that you all had before you was written by staff that was really P-VAC that served as the working group, the steering committee for this. They helped set the parameters of the plan to begin with. They, of course, reviewed the many iterations over the last few years. They even conducted a lot of the research and did a lot of the data collection that then fed into and informed the plan contents, particularly the walkability strategies section, which is, for lack of a better term, the sort of recommended best practices for Herndon that I'll talk about in a little bit. Currently, the long-range guidance for planning for pedestrians is provided predominantly by the 2013 comprehensive plan. That plan emphasizes a strong multimodal approach to the transportation network improvements in town. This pedestrian plan would build off of that broader comp plan language, get into more specific details, specific actions, specific improvements tied directly to the pedestrian network and its improvements. So, what does the plan do? Principally, it's meant to outline the ways in which we can make walking in Herndon safer, more convenient, more desirable for as many people as possible in town. And it does that by providing its direction for pedestrian network improvements for use by town staff and by town decision-makers. It also will help identify where improvements are needed, and that will be evaluated annually. The way it's set up is that that will be evaluated annually by the P-VAC. It also serves to promote and encourage walking as a viable alternative mode of travel. And it really does that by guiding those improvements for pedestrian facilities. And in doing that, enhancing, increasing the level of service for pedestrians otherwise known as increasing the walkability of town. What's in the plan is comprised of four main sections. There's an introduction. There's a walkability profile that explains the current environment for walking in town. There's a section on walkability strategies, which I mentioned earlier. This is focused on the measures and approaches for improving walkability in Herndon. And lastly, there's an action plan. The action plan is really a matrix listing all the site-specific network improvements that will be recommended. I'm gonna briefly go through each of these four sections here in the next couple of slides, and then I'm gonna get into some imagery of specific action plan suggested improvements in the plan. So, the introduction, unsurprisingly, this talks about the reasons for the pedestrian plan. It has a statement on its purpose, it has the plan goals. It gets into the benefits of a walkable community, which explains how that's tied in to community livability. And that contains a number of, I'd say, more administrative side items of the plan. So, how it was developed, the methodology that was used in this development, how it should be implemented, and how it should be managed moving forward. Next was that walkability profile of Herndon. This offers the review of Herndon's current pedestrian service levels and the conditions that currently define it. It profiles the pedestrian built environment, the physical environment. It discusses who may be walking in town, why they may be walking. It also profiles the policy in the administrative framework for pedestrian planning in town. There's also a subsection here explaining why Herndon, as walkable as it is today, still has a good amount of opportunity for enhanced walkability. So, it gives reasons such as close access to transit, access to services, access to regional trails. It also talks about how Herndon, of course, is a small town area. We have control over our roads. And in relative terms, we have a fairly dense and well-balanced use of mixes in our 4.2 square miles. The last subsection here, it gets into the common pedestrian network challenges for Herndon, which I'll say is really mostly tied to the town's suburban land use patterns and suburban street network patterns. The next section, the walkability strategies section, this is really the core of the plan, is where those common network challenges are confronted with specific measures, specific solutions for addressing each of them. It's broken up into eight different categories: pedestrian path connectivity and condition, street pattern and street design, safe and accessible pedestrian path design, safe and inconvenient crosswalks, land use and urban design, pedestrian environment, security and comfort, transit access and amenities, and pedestrian awareness. If you get into it, each of these subsections, it's explained why each topic is important and an issue in town, and what options are available to help manage each of those issues. The last section, the action plan, as mentioned, this lists the site-specific projects and improvements in town. These were mostly identified by P-VAC members, and this was done during a townwide walking audit of every block in town, of every street, and every off-site trail. So, kudos to the P-VAC members that really put a lot of time and work to do that. Of those projects, of the projects in the action plan, most of them really fall into just a few categories. I'm gonna highlight those, those most popular project types here in the next few slides. So, there's projects that are focused on improving access on existing facilities. In this case, we have two projects that have obstructions within handicap ramps, utility poles, utility boxes. There are projects focused on adding sidewalks where there currently is pedestrian activity in no other type of facility. There, in these examples here, there are dirt paths showing you where pedestrians are heavily using. Using an area, no facility, this is Spring Street, south side of Spring Street, near the on-ramp to Frederick County Parkway. And this aerial image is a, it's not very visible, but there is a dirt path here. This is the end of Center Street, where it connects up with, and becomes Nash over here and Florida over here. And then this cul-de-sac over here is the end of Virginia Ave. This is a heavily traveled dirt path. Let's see here, there are projects focused on filling in missing sidewalk and other path links in town. So, we do have, we do have a lot of, most of our streets in town have sidewalks. In most cases, it's on both sides of the street, in some cases, only on one. But we do have instances where there's a missing sidewalk, either for half, a partial block, or a whole block. And so, there's a number of projects in here that speak to filling in those gaps. There are projects focused on improving existing crossings, existing crosswalks, and it could be something as simple as restriping one that needs to be restripped. This is on Post Drive, right at the entrance into the Safeway Shopping Center, where there's a mid-block crossing that's a little worn away now. And then this is on Locust, the bottom image is on Locust Street, where they have a nice crosswalk, but there's not really any ADA compliance to the ramp on one side and on the other side. There's no ramp at all, it's just gravel.
And there's no sidewalk on that side of the street?
And that is, and that's, that may or may not be in the action plan table or not, but yeah, that is another missing link. And then there's projects that are proposing to put crosswalks where there currently are none, where there are heavily pedestrian crossings. The location on the bottom is on Herndon Parkway at the entrance into Shannon Park. A lot of people cross here from the neighborhoods to the north. And then the photo here, this is actually heading south on Centerville Road, just outside of the town. But it was a need that we had a sidewalk that ended here, and pedestrians were trying to cross under the bridge. That was on the other side of the street, nobody had a way to cross. So, this has been, this shows you how long the pedestrian plan has sort of been in the works. This has been in the plan for a couple of years, and we had notified the county of this quite some time ago. They actually got a little bit ahead of us, and they went in and put a sidewalk in already. So, that, one of those action items, we know has already been fulfilled by the county. That crosswalk went in maybe two months ago. The plan appendix would include the town council resolution for adoption of the plan. It would also include a pedestrian plan action item report. This is a report that would be kept, maintained, and regularly updated by staff as the status of each of these projects are changed. The overall plan, I think I mentioned, would be reviewed annually by the P-VAC and updated as necessary with a review by the planning commission and, of course, further review and adoption by the town council. The planning commission has reviewed this draft of the plan and does recommend its adoption. Their resolution was included in the staff report. The draft town council resolution has been provided for adoption of the plan. If approved, it would allow for administrative tweaks to the plan, administrative adjustments. And it also recommends to the planning commission that a reference to the pedestrian plan be added to the comprehensive plan in coordination with the ongoing five-year review and update to the complement. Staff, of course, supports that resolution. That's all I have, happy to have this before you all answer the questions you have.
Thank you. Questions for Bryce? Sigourney?
Bryce, what is the intended audience of this plan?
It's gonna be implementers of the projects, for the most part. Town staff, maybe contractors, developers, and you all, really.
I watched the planning commission discussion, and there was some question about safety, that safety was being taken into account in here. And I know there was a section that I haven't read yet, I'm sorry about that. But is it clear who has right-of-way in a pedestrian bicycle conflict? And this may not even be the place for that.
At planning commission, there was a, just a more general comment of how inclusive of safety considerations is the plan. I can say that basically every corner of the plan thinks about that. There is only one section that specifically calls out safety as a category, but if you look at all the other walkability strategy sections, they all are about maximizing the safety to the greatest extent possible. There was also a specific question at planning commission level about the safety of pedestrians, cyclists, are using pedestrian facilities. So, and we have a provision in the bicycle plan that talks about ensuring that whatever bicycle accommodation that we're making, facility that's being created, that we really think about how that may or may not impact the safety of other users, such as pedestrians. We basically, after that comment by the planning commission, we took that comment and kind of turned it around 180 degrees and put the inverse into this plan. So, that was something that was added with the planning commission review. And it essentially says, and it's a provision now that's in the draft, that says that any time that a pedestrian facility is being designed or constructed, that we have to take into consideration any other, the potential safety impacts any other motor transportation. To get to your question about, was... Who has the right-of-way in a, do you mean like in a sidewalk condition?
Yeah, if you're on a sidewalk and a cyclist is using a sidewalk. I mean, in Virginia, cyclists are, unless you exclude them, cyclists are permitted to use the sidewalk, and we don't exclude them. Which means there's an inherent risk to the pedestrian and also the cyclist, but of some sort of contact.
Right, and what this doesn't, doesn't really get into, I would say, addressing. In this case, sidewalks can be used in town by cyclists and pedestrians. There's really not, I mean, sort of rules, as far as I know, in regards to which one has the right-of-way over another. As far as I know. This plan doesn't get into that.
That's okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, other questions? First out, Sheila.
And how are we going to address the large number of streets in town that are very narrow, have no sidewalks, have no curb and gutter, have no crosswalks? And will staff or consultants go out and do counts so that we can address those and determine where they're needed, et cetera? Is that addressed in this anywhere that you're gonna talk about? As you said, you're going to assess things on an annual basis, so how...
Right, so, and so we, what fed the projects that are in here, and what will continue to feed the projects that are in here moving forward, will be a number, will be data that we collect as a town, data that's available to us from outside sources, incident and crash data, requests, outside requests that we might get to look at a specific project, and then, of course, we'd have to do an analysis on it. So, I think that if there is a need on a narrow street, if a narrow street doesn't have a sidewalk, or there's no crossings, or there are a lot of pedestrian activity, I think it's something that would be caught in one of those. But I would say, of course, it's something that should be brought to the attention of staff. If there's any specific examples that you can think of.
Well, I know, I've brought up the cross at Nash and Spring Street on numerous occasions. My neighbors are very concerned. Do I need to have them all show up and write letters? Because that is a very heavily traveled...
That's in here.
I didn't see that one. I saw the one at the middle school that goes into a ditch. But over the years, when I brought this forward, we were told you can't do it because the sidewalks don't align, and you would be crossing into a ditch. Yet there's numerous places around town that have similar situations. And it's so busy between Nash and the sidewalk through the woods, and you referred to the other side of Nash, where Center Street is, where the dirt path is. But they also have a sidewalk that they can take up to get to the nice big sidewalk. But when you cross Spring Street, I didn't see that picture in there, unless I missed it.
Is that number two?
It's number, it's number two on the action plan. And it was discussed quite a bit at P-VAC, and they did identify it as one of the priority projects.
Yeah, it's just such a long distance, people really get their speed up. I see, I can't really tell.
H thirty-one of the plan.
But, yeah, they get their speed up, and they're not stopping for anyone. And it's so busy there, we have a neighbor that's put out a watering station for dogs. I mean, it's just like a highway for people that walk their dogs, as well as people that stroll their children, et cetera. I think people like walking under the trees, where they can find nice shady areas in the summer especially. But is that addressed, how you're gonna take plans in the future? Or no?
No, that is addressed with, with a project, with the specific project you're talking about, that is something that will, staff will need to better understand because that'll probably then possibly feed into the CIP because that's, that's gonna involve dealing with stormwater management and adding a sidewalk. I don't know what private property implications are there, but that's one of, I'd say, for the projects that are listed here, that's probably one of the larger projects. But if it was identified as a top priority.
They're just talking stripes, just to get people to notice it. Because I know when we, when you go down Alabama with all the crosswalks that they have, and then we ended up adding another set of stop signs. But when I go down Alabama, which I do at least weekly, twice a week, people slow down where the crosswalks are even before the additional stop signs were put in, which makes it feel really good to walk over there. I like walking that area for that reason. Thank you.
Great. Yeah. Thank you, Bryce. I have a question, and I wanted to add to what Sheila just asked. You talked about the data gathering, right? So, incident and crash report, request and concerns from the residents, right?
Right.
On top of that, do we also, I just wanted to know from the operational perspective, do we also have like dedicated staff that goes and looks for new different areas of concern or that needs improvement on a timely basis?
We have, when it comes to a potential issue with an existing facility, I would say that we do have a more proactive approach to it, like if it's a maintenance, maintenance issue. We do have a transportation planner in Community Development, Michael Wallach, who is staffed with P-VAC, and he'll be the primary staff point of contact with the implementation of this plan and its annual update. But I think that for right now, it will still, the overall process will still be one of hearing from P-VAC members, hearing from the public in general of potential issues that are out there, and then doing the analysis to see what is needed. Versus proactively going out there and walking everything. I will say that we do expect to do a walking audit of the entire town with P-VAC on a somewhat regular basis. Maybe not every year, but maybe every other year, something like that. Right now, that's the best approach I have for staying on top of this.
Other questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Bryce, as always. Great job. Only because it's fresh in my mind, I'm going to the post office this afternoon, and I'm sitting there waiting for the light to turn on Monroe and Van Guren, where the WOD crossing is. It's number five on the list. And that light was green for the WOD. Someone blew through the red lights again. And I just, I keep wondering how's, how long before someone actually gets hit at that intersection? So, is there a way to, I mean, is five like a priority list or an incremental improvement? Or it's as staff announces necessary to turn the CIP regulations on placement of the signs?
Yeah, I would, it made the list, so it was a priority, but it was not listed on one of those, as one of those top-tier projects that we can talk about, if you recall. But it's, you know, it certainly can be moved around, however, but I'm not sure.
Because it's a little deceptive, too, right? People see green over there, and they just blow through it, not see the red in front of them.
I have seen the incident with the driver's hand.
I've seen him blow through Van Guren at Van Guren and Spring, and I almost got hit by this massive truck the other day that came off of Spring Street, did the left turn, and just blew through that. Thank goodness I was watching, I would have been flat.
So, do you need us to kind of prioritize these, or is that something you'd like us to have input to, or...
I think that we have the...
We're gonna be talking about budget here.
Yeah, no, I think that, I think that if, that's really the issue. We would need to get a better sense of, from a budget standpoint. It might be something that, as we go into CIP, and there's a couple of CIP sheets regarding sidewalk improvements, that would then, this would then feed into, would be the best approach for it.
Other questions or comments? I think it looks great. I know a lot of work has gone into this, and it will be a document that's fluid over time as different things pop up and funding comes and goes. So, I appreciate your work on it, and I'm sending you an email with some comments to not belabor the point here. Any other questions or comments before we move on? Okay. Next is an ordinance to grant a fourth franchise amendment to the program Executive Office Enterprise Information Systems Project Management Defense Communications in Army Transmission Systems Technology Applications Office. Formerly the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Gee, I see why they changed their name. We, next week, will follow the franchise process, which we've done several times together. Bits are not required for the amended franchises, but it will be a roll call. Tammy, I gave you plenty of time to get here.
You did. So, this is, as you mentioned, another one for the United States Army Corps of Engineers, RP. Yeah, I'm not even gonna throw it. So, this is a fourth amendment, a route expansion along Van Guren. So, essentially, they have abandoned, is now the towns that we are giving them to do this project along Van Guren Street. It's about twenty, has a linear feed conduit that they will get to use, which will also make it so they don't have to do any additional construction along Van Guren, at least north of the park, right?
Okay, that's pretty much it. That's pretty much it. Are there questions or comments for Tammy? Yes, sir.
So, I see we have a revenue coming from that, that's good. But is there any other impact to safety, environmental impact of anything? You can see negative impact from this contract? Do you see any, any negative impact? To the environment, to the people, to anything?
Not usually, I mean, they do a pretty good job of keeping the area safe and doing what they need to be doing, so.
Other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Tammy. Our general item is a resolution to initiate consideration of the zoning ordinance text amendment to revise standards for communications towers, develop standards for utility distribution or transmission poles, and to establish a maximum $500 fee for administrative review eligible projects. And Dave Stromberg is here for the staff report. And this is an initiating resolution, which means if passed, we send it to planning commission for their consideration, and then it would come back to us after that.
Chris, good evening. I tried to keep all the sections of the title, or I would have been here all night. But this is 1902, which is a small cell amendment. And again, it would authorize the staff to work with the planning commission to develop some new standards, change some of our existing standards to bring the zoning ordinance into compliance with the Code of Virginia. So, this past year and the previous year, the General Assembly passed some legislation. And the point is really to speed up the implementation of 5G wireless service throughout the Commonwealth. And so, the new provisions in the state code are really around small cells. So, these aren't your typical cellular towers that you think of. These are small antennas, which are typically mounted, eighteen and thirty-five feet. And much of the time, they're gonna be on utility poles that are located within the right-of-way, so down on the streets. But there are a surprising number of Dominion poles that are actually located on private property. But these could also be located on different types of private properties. So, you know, in the Herndon Shopping Center, it can be located right on the top of one of the parking lot lights that they have. They can just put an antenna up there. So, that's what staff will be working with the planning commission to develop those types of standards. And one of the big things that the state did is, for these small cell facilities, we cannot require a special exception. So, it doesn't go to the planning commission then to use the council. But they do allow us to review them administratively. But they do allow us to review them administratively, and again, have standards. And if they are in the historic district, uh, from Heritage District, then we can still have them go and obtain a certificate of appropriateness. So that's kind of the main, just a bit. Are there any questions that you have?
Okay. Uh, what control does H P R B have over our certificate of appropriateness for a small cell?
There are some limits to it. Most of it is going to be, if there's equipment associated with it, and we're trying to make kind of two pathways. So this is part what we did with the Smart City project. There are some street lights that just have the antennas on top, and then any of the ground equipment is actually camouflaged within, uh, the trash and recycling receptacles. So if you can hide anything in there, the staff wants to allow just administrative review for that to get your project approved more quickly. But if you don't want to do that, um, then you would have to go and find some other alternative method, um, and propose that before the H P R B. But especially for any associated equipment with it, uh, there, the town does still have the ability to regulate it in the Heritage District.
That's the one area where we have the most...
The state gave us the one, that one.
That's the one thing, yeah.
They didn't give us much.
Other questions here?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So even that max height is what, one hundred and twenty-five?
No. To be considered an administrative project, the maximum height it can be is fifty feet.
Fifty, okay.
And so anything above fifty to one twenty-five, or still, we're not changing that, where the max, no matter what, is one twenty-five. But anything between that fifty and one twenty-five, then it's, still goes through a special exception. It would be like any other, uh, cell tower that you've seen before.
Other questions or comments?
So it's more to accommodate the low hanging, like a five G?
Right, exactly, yes. Most of these, they're located more closely together, um, and they all backfill to a traditional tower. But the most appropriate height for them has been between the eighteen to thirty-four, thirty-five feet.
Other questions or comments? Thank you. Good luck with this, this is, I know, a hot topic, that we don't have a lot of control over, so. And a lot of interest in it, absolutely. Okay, so we, we have one consent agenda item next week, which is the proclamation honoring the Herndon High School, um, marching man's seventy-fifth anniversary of D-Day celebration, and that will be formally presented by Jim at their band concert on November sixth. Do we have any interest in putting the general item onto the consent agenda, or do you want to leave it as is? Sounds fine, good. So we will move, uh, item number four onto the consent agenda as well. Okay, that brings us to our one discussion item, which is forecasting and budget constraints. That's a lovely title. It's that time of year already. I think, Bill, Eric, can I have you to start us off?
I will set the table, and then I will turn it over to our, our brain trust at the end of the table, Jenny Tripoli, the Director of Finding Us, and Karen Gagliano, our Budget Manager. What I wanted to do tonight is, um, as I talk to you all over the year, we talk about various requirements that are coming up from some of the parts of capital and operating, and it's all these one-offs here, one-offs there. But as I started looking at it, I started being a little bit skittishes in terms of the universe of things we have to do in the coming couple of years, both how the operating budget is, is looking to project to grow, as well as our capital expenditures. And I wanted to take a look at it from the perspective of, uh, what can we expect to see in this next year's budget? And we're going to talk about the next two, three years of course, the budgets here in a few minutes, both in terms of operating and then again in capital. I also wanted to get you a full flavor of, of, of bonding capacity that we have in real sense, not, not the theoretical numbers that get off and dampen about, but the actual real numbers. Understanding completely that if we do more bonding, that will eat up, um, operating capacity in future years to service that debt. So, and there's the balancing act, and we're also going to talk about here in a few minutes. So we have put together a quick, um, flyover of the universe as we see it. Some of the emerging projects that we've talked about before, between stormwater management, um, some of the, the security projects that we've talked about, all these things are accounted for in this. This was a, um, joint effort of all the management team participated in this. It wasn't just the two ladies. The two ladies were responsible for rolling it together and putting it into a, a poster presentation that we present to you tonight, that it was every, it was everybody who participated in this event. But anyway, I'll turn it over to Jenny, who will carry the ball.
Is it powered on, Tom?
Yes, there are copies. Should we also, if you need one?
Sure.
Thank you. Apologies, I made a couple last minute tweaks. I could have probably tweaked it for another week, but, um...
And we will get this one up. Your grant, yes, well.
Thank you. It's all right. This is the fun time of year where I dwell in three years. We're finishing up the fiscal year nineteen audit. We're executing fiscal year twenty, and we're planning for fiscal year twenty-one. So I want to start by giving you a little, um, a quick overview of the unaudited F Y nineteen numbers. Well, they're currently being audited. We're close to wrapping up, um, but it's not official yet. The auditors haven't issued their opinion. So actual numbers for nineteen for revenues are about thirty-six point five million. And I'm going to come back to that slide in a minute. Actual expenditures were about thirty-five point one million. So revenues over expenditures are one point three. But that doesn't mean we're adding to unassigned fund balance to the tune of one point three million. Recall that we changed our financial policies for fiscal year nineteen, which requires a cascading into the rainy day fund, which is revenue stabilization, the capital reserve fund, and the contingency fund. On top of that, we have a budget amendment at the beginning of every year, where we, we adopt our budget, and then in July, we amend it to carry forward appropriations that were unspent, um, not all of them, but some of them, from the prior year. That eats up that balance as well. So your overall increase to unassigned fund balance is three hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. That other money didn't disappear. It's in assigned fund balance. It's in those buckets that we've talked about, um, which are really to bolster our fund balance should something happen like a recession, um, or a major revenue shortage, or a major unforeseen expenditure. We can tap into some of those fund balances. So going back again to the revenue page, we're very conservative with our revenue estimates. We have, revenues historically are fairly flat. Real estate, we're projecting about two and a half percent per year. Meals taxes at about two and a half, or about two. But again, um, keep in mind that when the economy turns, the first taxes that tend to go with it are meals tax, sales tax, transient occupancy tax, and to an extent, B poll. B poll, as you well know, is also, that's business professional and other licenses, is pretty volatile. And that's why we keep the budgeting level at about four point two, four point three, even though we come in typically higher. Just as a reminder, we treat that delta between the budgeted amount and the actual as one-time revenue to fund transfers over to the C I P fund or other one-time needs. So looking out, we're projecting, uh, you know, thirty-seven point, so we're estimating about thirty-eight point three for fiscal year twenty. That has kind of the one-time bump in the meals taxes in it. And then we're projecting out a little more conservatively in twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, keeping it like thirty-seven point five to the thirty-eight, up to thirty-eight and up in, um, in revenues. And again, forecasting, we, we tweak, we tweak how we forecast as we have actuals. It's, it's very much a recursive process, where we look at how we estimated, how we actually came out, and we go back and, and change our assumptions.
Jenny, uh, why did you call it a one-time meals?
So you get, you get kind of a one-time bump because we've raised the meals tax, and then it levels out again. You're not going to see another nine hundred thousand dollar increase each year unless you raise it again. Good question. Uh, expenditure wise, um, again, this, this is a bleak picture, and it's if we take everything that we think is coming down the pipe and we put it in a budget. You can see F Y twenty adopted. It was at thirty-seven point two. The F Y twenty estimate takes the first two budget amendments that we've done, including the one from last weekend, to consideration. So that's why it's higher. And then we're projecting out, um, kind of fairly large increases in twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. We'll get more into what's driving those increases, because this is the feedback that we got from departments about things that we need, that we're not doing right now, or things that we are doing, but we need to bump up a bit. Refugeing recycling is one of them. That's not getting any cheaper. We just had a bid come in that was over budgeted, and it was the only bid. So there are certain things where it's just more expensive, and there's a way, we have to find a way to do it. But balancing all of the scarce resources is obviously the, the name of the budgeting process. So you'll see that, um, we have about a three and a half percent increase in personnel costs, and including some compensation initiatives, about a three percent increase in O and M. Debt service, the debt service estimates include, um, the art center build-out of one point three million, the remainder of the parking garage, two point six million, and the potential shortfalls in the East Eldon and East Spring Street projects. Plus, I factored in a contingency, plus there's always cost of issuance. So I've, I've built in a very basic debt service model, straight line over twenty years at five percent, to give you a sense for what that might look like. How we actually structure the debt is part of what we have our financial advisors help us do, to really match cash inflows and outflows. So pictorially, this is what it looks like. With the trend line, the light green is the revenue, uh, the darker blue is expenditures, and you can see the gap in the trend line widens and widens. Again, with fairly conservative revenue estimates and maybe a little more aggressive, but realistic expenditure estimates. Here's what the breakdown of the revenues look like in the general funds. You've got your real estate tax at the bottom. You've got, uh, we lumped together other fees, just because we didn't want to have, like, stacks ahead, tiny miniscule little numbers on them, uh, just to give you a sense for that. Other local taxes, that includes sales and transient occupancy. B poll is the light orange, the four point nine in nineteen, and then kind of budgeted flat at four point two, four point three, four point four. Intergovernmental, that's largely your V dot, quarterly maintenance, your police five ninety-nine funds, some of the Fairfax County grants that we get. Uh, we also get a number of federal grants and state grants for police work. And then finally, at the top, you have your meals taxes. So you, again, so I mean, you can see how there's that one-time kind of bump up in twenty with the, with the new rate, and then it levels off. Expenditure wise, the main categories that we have are personnel, O and M, and capital. I rolled debt service and interfund transfers into capital, because they're arguably all capital expenditures one way or the other. And so, you know, again, we're a services organization. It takes people to deliver services. That's why that's the, the largest proportion of your general fund. And, and just to back up, this is just general fund focused. We didn't focus on the enterprise funds at this point. So it gives you a sense kind of of the magnitude of the increases. And then, sad graph, this is the predicted, or not predicted, forecasted budget shortfalls if all of these things that we are looking at, we have to, have to do at once. So I'm going to turn it over to Karen to talk through some of these items that are driving, you know, and again, in particular, you're seeing this big spike between twenty and twenty-one. And so we want to get into what is driving some of those spikes.
Hey. Looking at the personnel area first, uh, six hundred and eight thousand there. Basically, three areas, um, in H R. We've got some input about some pay scale practices that need to be looked at, some adjustments and some upskilling. That's at, at a cost of two ninety-five. From D P W, um, we had some input about, um, the support of intergov and asset management project initiatives. That comes in at about a hundred and five thousand. And there's more detail there about what all that covers. The third point, uh, is some funds to cover special events labor. Right now, it's really not built into the Department of Public Works budget, but they are handling it, so it takes away from some of the other services they need to deliver. So they wanted to just make that known. The next area, uh, the largest area is operations and maintenance, as far as the number of projects. From the Department of I T, um, they have some critical core functions that need some funding at a hundred and fifteen thousand. Basically, all software-related, uh, professional services having to do with software and, uh, software that we use to manage the town. From Parks and Rec, we have the Art Center. This would kick in in, uh, F Y twenty-two at eight hundred thousand.
And if I can just jump in on that, that's, that's definitely an estimate, um, taken from a couple of different sources. We'll have a better sense for that, obviously, when these things come online. But, um, it's, uh, kind of an average between two sources that I used.
The next area is, um, development of a stormwater management plan. This has become necessary due to increasing management requirements at a cost of approximately a hundred and twenty thousand. Also expecting in future years that the maintenance or repair of the facilities, that will, the increases will occur for that. Again, full asset management, this time dealing with, um, updating the current systems, doing building condition assessments. This is at a cost of two hundred thousand. Professional services for full set asset management, and this is basically to implement existing software capability, uh, not currently being used, at two hundred and fifty thousand. Contracted services regarding building inspections. This is really triggered by the number of, uh, new projects and existing projects underway at a cost of a hundred and thirty-one, three oh two. Going to the next page. Some more contracted services for custodial. By expanding the custodial services to other town and urban buildings, it would increase by approximately three hundred thousand. And part of that would be offset by some personnel costs being reduced. Again, some contracted services, that was mentioned earlier, for refuse and recycling at a hundred and twenty-three. Contracted services for vehicle maintenance and repair. And, and in this section, I need to apologize to Public Works, because I was going over my notes before I came tonight, and I realized I forgot to put a, a chunk of change in there for part of this request. I did mention the forty thousand for the trash truck arms, but I did not put in the ninety-two thousand to, uh, enhance the vehicle maintenance portion of the budget to bring it up to what the actual costs were in F Y nineteen. So we'll be adding that in later, sorry about that. And the last one, traffic control infrastructure. This area needs some assessment and repairs. Cabinets need replacing, and signal lights need to be, uh, assessed at a cost of a hundred and, a hundred thousand, um, over six years. The last area is capital. We're looking at underground tanks that need replacement. Total one-time cost of seven hundred and fifty thousand. But by dividing up the, the tanks that need to be replaced, it could be done over a couple of years to minimize the impact. H V A C equipment, um, some of it is ending its useful life and will need to be replaced. Also, some of them are using coolant. That is, uh, no longer a, um, a substance that can be used. So that is a ticket of a hundred and twenty thousand. That's in addition to an existing budget of two hundred and eighty thousand. The next one, building fourteen eighty-one. The next one, Building 1481 houses several of the town employees. They're having some trouble with roof leaking and HVAC. In order to fix those two issues, the cost would be 80,000. And so that's something that needs to be worked at. The last one, a vehicle replacement program. That is an annual cost of 900,000 to a budget of 300 that exists already. And this includes all vehicles except for the HPD cruiser replacement program.
You got any questions? Just to jump right in really quickly, these are capital items that were moved to the general fund because they're the REs, the replacement, repair, lifecycle type items. You know, the fuel tanks, you could argue a point for that being in the CIP, but this touches mainly on the general fund again.
And again, as we go into the budgets, negotiations, and discussions in departments, you know, we're going to be looking at varying things and seeing, you know, what can possibly happen, what has to happen, what can be delayed, the other ways to do things. Should we be having a different discussion about 1481 than that discussion?
Right, that's what I wrote down.
So, I mean, those are the conversations. I just wanted to give you a sense of what is all out there that we have to start accounting for somehow.
And a lot of this stuff is huge. It's not for this upcoming budget, it's for um...
It depends. And that's what, that's again, part of this conversation.
And this, because we only went out to '23, so we wouldn't really focus on what happens when Metro comes online and the population increases, as we hope it will. Additional staffing needs for, you know, DPW for police. So that's even further down the road. We're just looking at kind of the next couple of years because once you get beyond a couple of years, it's really, your crystal ball starts. You've got to shake the magic eight ball a little bit. Bonding capacity. So this is kind of a busy slide and I'll walk you through it briefly. By law, we can issue debt up to 10% of our assessed value, which was 4.9 billion this year. So I don't really think we're doing 490 million in debt anytime soon, nor do we want to. That's not realistic. Our financial policies limit us to debt service at or below 12% of general fund expenditures, excluding the transfers out to the CIP funds and debt service itself. So when you look at that and you take the numbers that we presented here, 12%, and these are rounded, the 12% debt capacity numbers are rounded. It looks like we can afford on the surface, you know, 4.2, 4.6, 4.9, 5 million in annual debt service. The projected debt service, based on the things we talked about in the next slide, gets into what is involved in the projected debt service. It includes everything we have currently, of course, up through the borrowing we did last year, the 2018 B. Just the general fund component, the largest component of that was the water. So you get to a delta of, here's what's left, basically is the delta. And that translates to a debt capacity of between 35 and 41 million. But that's still really pushing it because if you think about the debt and service in terms of the real estate tax rate, that's what a general obligation bond is. It's backed by our ability to levy taxes on real estate in particular. The value of a penny is about 452,000. That's five cents. 2.5 million is about five cents on the real estate tax rate. So that's another way to look at it. So, of course, you know, having a mix of debt and PGO is what most localities do. It's healthy. But finding that right mix is, you know, what we're trying to do. So again, just to end here, the items that are included in the projected debt service are the art center buildout plus a 10% contingency and 3% cost of issuance. So 1.3 increased by that. The remainder of the downtown parking garage, we've borrowed a million already. There's 2.6 million left for that. There are some projects that may require debt financing that we have shortfalls in. The major ones, East Eldon and New Spring Street. So the town's potential exposure for that, according to current estimates, is about 4.2 million in total. And so if we were to finance that, that's factored in. We do have a couple of projects with potential shortfalls as well that I didn't factor into the debt service model. All three Van Buren Complete Street projects and the Herndon Metro project. So I know it's kind of wet blanket. The weather was certainly appropriate for this level of discussion, although it was a beautiful rainbow before it came down. But that just kind of gives you a sense of some of the challenges we're facing and the constraints we're facing. Anything to wrap up? It's a lot to take in. Obviously, if you have questions afterwards, feel free to get in touch.
So part of the reason why we thought this was important to get in front of you is at some point here in the next couple of months, you're going to be giving me a guide, direction for next year. And I needed to give you numerous things that we're working at as we go into those conversations. There's many drivers behind some of the security projects that are still outstanding and have got to be done. Some of the personnel things that we talked about are significant, are correcting, some of which we're correcting immediately. We have some problems with the low end of our pay scale being lower than the combined averages of other jurisdictions around here. We're fixing that out of the gate. But there's some problems in other, some of the other pay factors around the problem of recruitment. And we want to start addressing those things. We have some jurisdictions are doing things with skills-based bonuses or pay bumps and things that we're investigating how to help ensure that we have the right amount of CDLs on the streets pushing snow and picking up trash, how we can make sure we have the right mixture of certified people in critical jobs. So we're looking at ways to do that right now. That's driving some of those personnel numbers. Those personnel matrices don't include new people. I know that she was talking to me several times about how she could really use two new officers. That's not even in here. So anything new as far as a new body in the organization is not included in there. What this does not also take into account of what Jenny and Karen and I have talked about is the elasticity needed should we get an economic downturn. So we're going to start working on those contingencies in the coming weeks to help give us a guidebook of how we can weather anything that would occur in that way. It's funny, I was just down at IC MASH teller and I think Karen and I said that I intended to go to a session on planning for a recession. And I walked in the room and I was a little bit late finishing up my previous session. I walked in and it was a room this big with like 400 people in it, standing. And I couldn't even squeeze in the back and it was like 800 degrees. A lot of people were very concerned about that. There were 6,000 people at this convention, apparently half of them were in that room. But it's on people's minds.
Well, it's cyclical, I mean, over time, so.
Very much so, very much so. So we're going to look, we're starting to look at that, but anyway, so.
So comments, feedback on what we're looking at here, because it's pretty devastating actually to think about it. Do you want to go first? Pretty? No, pretty good.
So, thank you, Bill. You just answered my next question. I was about to ask the contingency plan if we ever have to have the economic downturn. The other one is to Jenny. So we see in our forecasted budget shortfall in fiscal year '21, '22, and '23, we can see some shortfall, right? But I assume we are thinking about very conservative revenue? But when it comes to expenditure, we are, we'll be a little aggressive? So when it comes to the actuality, we may end up getting more revenue, but our expenditure, so these numbers are definitely subject to change, right?
They are.
Even though they look scary.
Yeah. And it's not a, oh, we did this on purpose to make it as big as possible. It's, it's... Some of the revenues are very hard to predict. We look at the past kind of for guidance. We take averages, we take increases into consideration. With the expenditures, there's some more, you know, there's ways to kind of group some of them and we try to do that. What are our average personnel costs over time? What are our contracts increasing by over time? So, but yeah, every forecast is as good as its assumptions. And that's why we're really getting a process, a better process in place to have these forecasts and then go back, look and see how we did and tweak accordingly.
And if I can just pause, this is like the first time that I can remember us forecasting three years in advance on any budget. We've been wanting to get there for a long time and this is our first cut at this. The other thing that I wanted to talk about, why conservative forecasting revenue is important, is because it's hard for us to take into account things like businesses leaving Herndon's Hartway in advance of redevelopment. So what happens over there? We lose B-pole, the, there's nobody in the buildings. So all of a sudden now the property values over there may be a little bit less as they start to go into. So we're going to see a loss of revenue in that area. We're going to pick it up and then some on the, on the two, three years later when it gets built. But we have, but we have no way of knowing when those things are going to trigger, how they're going to unfold. So again, the conservative element gives us a little bit of buffering for things like that.
And the other buffer to keep in mind is we still have an extremely healthy fund balance. Unassigned fund balance is going to come out at about 29.5% of general fund expenditures. As we, and I'm starting to get emails from the ratings agencies as well, like starting to hint that something's coming and they're looking. And as great as, as well as we're doing, it's very important to keep it that way because the economy is one of the main things that drives the credit rating. But having a very strong buffer like we do to try to mitigate against that is another very important thing. And so it's great that Herndon does that. But a lot of these rainy day funds, especially if something catastrophic happens, that's a one and done. So there is that buffer there.
So just to, just to go back and revisit those, we have in essence four buckets in that on the side. And then the major pool of unassigned fund balance, which is interesting every, every year. But it's for capital contingency. It's for an economic downturn to get us through the fiscal year, a rainy day fund for lack of a better term. It's elements or a B-pole, a B-pole protection if it should not manifest. So there's various, and they're mostly, those buckets are mostly funded.
The two big ones, revenue stabilization is fully funded at 1.8 million, contingency is fully funded at 900,000. Capital reserve doesn't have a ceiling, but that's really your reserve for future debt service. Or if for some reason we don't have that excess of B-pole and we need one-time funds, we can pull from there.
If we have any excess at the end of the year in actual numbers, it triples into those buckets. And then it falls through down to B-pole underneath, which is the, which is our last line of defense.
Right. And that's how that 1.3 in 2019 turned into 341,000. That's what's left after you fill those buckets and amend the budget for the incumbent.
Those are financial policy changes we made last year prior to going to New York for...
Sarah, have you had comments, questions?
Yes. Thank you. By the way, this is amazing, thank you. I will just proceed with the assumption that there's going to be an economic year. I mean, just assume it's going to happen. I mean, because when you're starting to project out three years, yeah. I mean, and pick a number, take the last three recession hits, average them out, do a 1.5. Right, and that's the type of impact we need to absorb.
And that's what we're pivoting to next.
I would say do it. So my request would be to get all these things that aren't in here, these potential shortfalls, the Van Buren Complete Streets, the multimodal access, all that stuff, additional resources, put it in here because we need a complete picture before we can even guess next year, let alone two or three years out. I think that would help me personally with this. And by the way, this is amazing, so thank you for doing this three-year projection. It's better to forecast long-term, I think, than just year to year.
Well, like I said, we were getting the one-offs here and there. And sitting in my seat, we get like one or two, but you come in and tell me something, or something from Scott or something from Lisa Gilherin and from Parks and Bragg and Sin comes in. And you're getting these one-off things and it need to be consolidated, need to be forecasted out. And I thought it would be of value to you all to see what I'm seeing on a day-by-day basis.
Well, things like the DPW kind of over time for all the special events. We know that we are going to continue doing those and probably even more. So we need to be budgeting for that instead of making it overtime. A lot of this, I think, is what we keep talking about, growing pains of being a smaller place. It's now a bigger place with more things happening and different revenue streams. And I also think that, I agree completely to get the whole picture out here for the public as well because, I mean, we're going to have to have some revenue from somewhere.
Well, I'll thank the hit for not having it tonight because like I said, it was something that triggered to me when I was out. And that's what I went, we got to get to recession, we got to get, we got to get...
That's not a criticism, it's just that if, we have not raised our real estate tax rate in nearly a decade, which is just unimaginable. So I do think that if we do, if that is what it looks like may be something that we're going to be discussing, we need to let the public know why we're talking about it and that we're not just, you know, flippantly spending money. And here are some real items that we need to pay for.
And just to also, the last couple of years, we've been able to afford more because we've gone in and tightened up some of the issues with the budget. We were double booking some entries and we were finding some weird anomalies of where money was getting scrolled away. And we cleaned a lot of that up. So which you're operating under is probably the leanest budget you've seen in a while over the past couple of years. The other thing too, we have to remember, is I just lost my train of thought, so I haven't...
You were going to say.
So I would say that the fact that we've gotten for the last several years, we've gotten things that fall apart, like automobiles and things, on a program. So you're not just waiting until, I mean, when the mayor and I first got elected, there were a lot of missing automobiles that hadn't been taken care of. So we had to really punch it up.
What I was going to say is, and just keep in mind that every year we go into the budget, and I usually have my two main more requests from this, from the departments than we end up with. And through the process, we're able to hone down, reprioritize in the departments and figure out ways to make some of this work. So keep that in mind, this is, this is the outside edge. It hasn't gone through the process yet that you all need to know about this.
So I didn't... Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry.
Bill got excited.
I got, I remember what I was going to say.
But I just want to say, I think we're run very well. And whenever I go to B and L and hear what's going on around the state, the other cities and towns. And we haven't raised the property taxes, real estate tax. Now, we have raised the meals tax twice, but then that actually got people outside of the people living here to help contribute. But I want us to keep going the way we are and people like living in the town, they like our services. And with all the talk with the police and cameras, we led the way and doing a great job. That cost us some money, but we've already done it. And we, you know, and just all the other wonderful things we've got going on. I don't want us going back. And we usually do have people come in and say, raise my taxes, don't take away my services. We hear that more.
The other thing is that I like the fact that, first of all, I want to reiterate what everybody said, that having a budget three years out is really helpful. Also want to say that every year since I've been on council, there's been something very unexpected come up that we've had to fund. And because we're being leaner in our budgeting, there isn't that sort of hiding it. We don't, we're not hiding it. It's transparent, it's out there. This is what we're spending money on and I think that's wonderful. I know it doesn't, you know, you can never be transparent enough for the, for the public. But I like the fact that when we have something that we need to unexpectedly take care of, it's not hidden because we have lots of extra money scrolled away in the budget that we were able to hide it with. So, and that's because we're not, we know we have a good staff and our staff is doing a great job in thinking everything through. So I do appreciate this a lot.
Jen?
Yeah, I'll add to that as well. So thank you for this, thank you for the three-year look and certainly for acknowledging the recession and what we really have to be paying attention to, especially as we get into budget season. A couple of things on page nine, I was just thinking about. And I know you said right at the beginning, you're like, listen, I was maybe a little more aggressive with possible spending and a little more conservative, which is, of course, with revenue, which is, of course, we would want you to show it. But some of these do seem high, like the art center, there's some things on here. So I guess that leads to my question, two things. One, as much as we can predict and do that, like, is there a follow-up where we can tighten up some of those things? And what's your advice on that?
Oh, yeah, oh, I think so, definitely.
And then... And then, because the second piece is then, you know, obviously, the public knows in terms of we're talking about it tonight, but they, not everyone listens or pays attention to this part. So, what is the plan? Or when are we sharing some of this preliminary with the public? Or will this be a general item? Or what's our thoughts on, would we share?
Well, this is going to be shared. We're, this is, this is.
Public document.
This will be, this will be appended to Grantis tomorrow.
But I think it'll be our usual budget process.
Right. But I mean, on a work session, right, it's not, it's not part of the public hearing. A lot of folks don't necessarily follow everything. I know it's.
As you say, some do. It'll be certainly in the budget. As if you're talking about the Art Center per se, that, that's something that once we get to closing, we've got to start talking about Art Center operations.
Let me ask this differently. Sorry. Are we going to present, this was really helpful the way you presented it to us. Are we going to present it similar to this to the public? That's my question.
I don't know that that was part of the plan, because I think as we get into the budget process itself, and we engage the public, and these, these numbers become more solidified into, here's what it looks like programmatically for '21, what we need to do, and here are the long-term impacts to it. Prince William County, for example, does a budget and a five-year projection at the same time every year. That's, they have a bigger staff and a much bigger budget. But, but I think the idea is that we want to continue doing this and have this discussion as part of, of the budget process. Because again, like the 800,000, that's, that's an estimate. It's, it's a wag, if you will, based on a couple of sources. We're not really going to be able to nail that down until we have some better.
Right. I think, isn't that true of a lot of these? Those are sort of ballpark figures for all the possibilities. Did you have something else, Jen, before? I just did a couple of things on page nine, but. Oh, well, I mean, it was, I was just saying, in general, there's a couple of things on there where I know, again, speaking to your aggressive conservative part. Okay, so I guess your answer is we're just going to continue this as we put budget items on the, the public hearing agendas. That's a big part of it, was really what I was getting at.
To your point, once this is out there, people will be talking about it. So, maybe a brief presentation at the public hearing, just so that people, because if somebody grabs this and looks at our cost estimates, they might not understand how general or how we're trying to work this. So, we could, if you could say something like, you know, we're working on the budget. We put out preliminary.
I can turn my comments. I'm trying to figure out where we can pigeonhole that in. I can do a turn on my comments.
Well, we can, we're going to attach this to Grantis tonight now that it's final. So, it will be there for the public. And then, we could reference it next week in your comments.
And just tell people that it's not, you know, it's not in any way written in stone as a projection.
No, no. I'm just trying to inform you of the universe of things that are out there that we're going to have to look at at some point. And again, it's all, what is budgeting? It's prioritization. It's what's important to this organization, what's important to this town. And, and how do we carry the priorities? But I needed you to understand the universe of things. So, as we start getting into this prioritization exercise, we all have to inform you.
There are a lot of high priority things kind of coming to a head. So, I think that's, that's what I took away from this. Cesar?
Two things. I prefer swags.
Scientific swag.
And I was going to echo what Sigourney said. I, this is great product. I don't know that in the context, I would just label it as a really, really draft discussion. And there's a lot of ethereal discussion to happen.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And like I said, the one big one that jumped off of me, 1481, is do we want to put our money into it?
Yeah, we got to talk.
Or have a different conversation over it. I mean, again, this isn't all set in stone. This is, this is just to.
That's really funny.
Payable setting for our budget process.
Right. You just have to label it correctly so we don't get some panic out there.
Well, and there might be some panic, but that's not necessarily terrible, because people need to be aware and talking about it and tell us what they, how they want us to spend their money. Well, maybe not panic. And the other thing that's in the financial policies that will formalize a bit more is to give you at least semi-annual, we want to shoot for quarterly updates on this, so that we can talk about, here's our budget, here's where we are at this point in the year, here's where we think we're going to end up. And then, make this a more regular conversation. Because I think it makes sense. And the technology that you all invested in for us with, with Munis allows us to drill down very, very, to a very detailed level. So, that either aids or hinders analysis. It depends on your viewpoint.
I think that is an excellent point, because council terms are short, and there's always turnover. So, the more conversation that you're having, the more up-to-date everybody can be. So, I think that's a great idea. And it goes along with our policies that we adopted last year, or two years ago, whatever that was. Any other comments preliminarily on this? Certainly won't be the last time we talk about it. Just thinking. All right. Thank you so much. It's nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Welcome. That brings us to roundtable. I'll start us off. First pitch was 10 minutes ago.
There's two options. Two options. I'll go first.
Who would like to go first? Anybody?
I'm going to go.
Okay, please.
I don't have much things to talk about, but one thing I would definitely talk about is the homecoming parade. So, loved it. This was my first as council member. I think looking at the participants, more than 68 groups and 1,500 people walking, that was really a true representation of who we are in terms of our diversity, not just in races and ethnicity, but I'm talking about mindset and, you know, culture and so many other things we get to see. So, that really, really represented who we are as a town of Herndon. So, thank you.
Thank you, Parkson, Brad. N-HBW, NHPD, and everybody who works for.
And I saw the pictures, and they were really beautiful.
Oh, those are great pictures.
With them.
Any other? Okay, please.
Couple of things. First of all, about the parade, I really, since I just saw through the pictures, I loved the Nepalese presentation. That was so wonderful. And if you, if you know anybody in that community, please pass along my congratulations. I bet you do.
He's not real connected.
I was worried about that.
I wanted to ask about historic versus heritage. We have a heritage preservation, and it's always seemed odd to me that we call it heritage rather than historic. And now that heritage has taken on some meanings that it never used to have, I'm wondering if we could call it historic. Do we could change that?
I don't know what we would have to go through. I mean, the steps we would need to go through to change it to historic technically, makes no difference.
Right. But the term heritage has taken on some baggage over the years.
The sign on the toll road says Herndon Historic District. And my anecdotal knowledge of it is that heritage was more acceptable at the time than historic. And that was really what it was. But it doesn't mean anything different. So, I agree with you.
Yeah. So, that's just.
If I could comment on that, it actually does mean something different.
Well, that's the baggage.
The word, right. The word, it's like, could you or would you? It, it does have a negative connotation for some people.
Heritage versus historic?
Absolutely.
Well, I fall for historic. That's what I call it.
I'm just, I'm giving you the different perspective. Heritage, well, who's heritage?
I love it that way.
It's just, it's, just throwing it out there.
Change it to historical.
All right. We took care of that.
No, no, me.
Okay, we need to change the stuff here.
We'll be back in touch on that.
Seems like the right time with the guidelines coming soon, so.
And also, ran into a very nice fellow downtown, Scott Kreis, who is now going to be our representative, I understand, to Dominion. So, I thought that was interesting. You know Scott, right? He worked for Senator Warner, and he's leaving mid-March. So, that would be nice, because we know him.
Hopefully, he doesn't go native.
He's freaked out right now.
Dominion has its own culture that is, yes.
Yes. But anyway, I thought that was good information.
They are interesting, interesting to work with.
Better class guy.
And interesting, that is a equalism.
He probably knows what he's doing, too. Who's next? Anybody? Jen or Cesar?
Parade was awesome. Congrats. It was amazing. Talked to a lot of people. Everyone enjoyed it. My folks thoroughly enjoyed it. The discussion on housing, a lot of great feedback on that, by the way. I think a lot of people were excited that we were actually making plans. So, look forward to more of that.
I agree. That was a great discussion. Jen, do you have anything?
Okay, okay. Homecoming was awesome, of course. Always good. Except we got to keep those Volkswagen's running. You can't turn them off. They just don't come back home. Our person had a problem.
That was operator error.
Okay.
I do.
Real hard time.
Two?
Surprise.
For two of them?
And.
No.
Okay, okay. I had a Toyota that used to do the same thing. And there was a really good article about e-scooters. I know quite a few people are really excited about it. But one of the headline was, it's going to cost you more. It's now costing in this area more to take a scooter than to take, yeah, the Uber, because they've raised the rates on the minutes. And they had to raise the rates because of all the issues that they're having to pay more fees to the municipality to pay for getting things taken care of. So, I'll forward you that article.
Yeah, would you send that to all of us? That'd be interesting. Or would you just send it to all of us if you think about it? Or send it to Vicki?
I'll send it out. And I've got a hard copy. Just want to look at it in case all the pictures don't come out. But the whole problem with it is all the, kind of like this thing here, where we talked about DPW helping with special events later. Well, this is going to be a year-round special event.
That's true.
If we're finding those in our yards and so forth.
So, they're a budget shortfall.
Yeah. So, I'll, I'll send everyone that.
Well, it is true. We've used them in California, and it costs the same for Dave and I use scooters as it would have if we'd taken an Uber. So, it's like, you know, it's probably more fun, but.
Well, DC just put, people were whizzing down the road at 20, 25 miles an hour with no helmet. And the young man riding it said he was bringing his helmet to work every day. And then they cut down and said, no, you can only go 12 miles an hour. So, it takes him more than twice as long, which is why his fare went up, because they doubled the rate and it takes him longer to get there.
It's a lot of factors.
Yeah. So, I mean, do we really want these things speeding around? My neighbor had, has an electric bike, and he let us all ride it. I'm going down the sidewalk with a helmet, going 10. Going to 12 was kind of scary on a street. I mean.
You know, the scooters are fast, and there's no shock absorption.
Yeah. And, and to have a wreck on a bicycle like that with, like on Spring Street, that is a bit toast. So.
Arlington County just is having a hearing, but they finished their pilot program, and they're going to allow them on their sidewalks at 6 miles an hour.
You got to realize.
It's out there as a radar.
And so, Bill, as long as, so when are we, is this on our next work session agenda?
It's coming. It's coming soon.
We have to adopt it up at the end of the year. It will not be, expect to have a couple of iterations of this. We have to have something adopted, right, at the end of the year. Expect to tweak it a couple times.
I want to talk about something I picked up at ICMA on that, too, where I was attending an S-recession. And, and there's a jurisdiction, that's in my notes somewhere, that, that not Virginia, that mandates the scooter companies to give the GIS data of the locations to the locality, so they can plot them. And in this one case, a scooter company came in, so we brought another 400 into the city, and they went, well, I'll tell you what, go get these 400 to have it moved in like three weeks and relocate them. And they were able to track them via GIS.
That's not a number that's in our ordinance.
No, no, no. My point, my point being is, you kind of poke, you can poke back and say, before you put more, you might want to relocate the ones you have.
Yeah. At BML, I know that session we went to, they talked a little bit about, you can't necessarily ask for personal data, like the people, you know.
No, you ask for the scooters themselves.
Exactly. So, it's like knowing what you can ask for. And there is, of course, you know, we have legal assistance from the woman out of DC that can be helpful to this. And they have template language and.
But that data sharing.
I have the, some of that, yeah.
It's probably overkill for us. Fairfax County has a full-scale adopted.
Right.
Program. So, I'm glad you all are excited.
Well, and what's incredible is these companies have been in business like two years. And it's just global. It's crazy. I mean, I think the fact is, we kind of have to do it. And obviously, we have to do it for a state of Virginia. We should do it.
You have to do it, yeah.
Yeah. And we should do it, just because I do think it's a service our residents want and citizens want.
We can't prohibit them.
Right. Can't prohibit them. And we just have to make it the best we can.
Just like sales hours.
Yeah. Exactly. I was just going to say, looking forward to the roundtable tomorrow night at 3:00, 7:09. I may as well be there finally. Although, I am still missing a kid event for it, but I'm here. Missed the first two, so I need to show up. Any comments for us?
No, just, it was a whirlwind. And the ICMA picked up, went to a lot of things, talking about citizen engagement, crisis management, among other things, the gas-free thing, talking about the ways you can leverage for scooters and other vehicle services. It was good, some good stuff.
All right. Welcome home.
Brain is packed.
All right. That concludes our agenda this evening. See you in other business. I may be adjourned.
Second.
All those in there.
Hi.
That motion carries, and we are adjourned at 8:27.